Right, we are now into the section of the meeting given to motions. So, motion number one is submitted by councillor Butler.
Thank you Chair. The motion is that this council recognises the valuable contribution that the Monmouthshire and Brecon canal brings to the economy of Monmouthshire. It recognises the continued health and operation of the canal is essential to the wellbeing of its residents and securing its future is vital to the communities who thrive along its route. And it requires the leader of the council to urgently convene a meeting of all the key organisations to discuss a resolution and ensures that all councillors, including those in the affected wards, are briefed on developments. I would like to start by thanking the members of the public who addressed us earlier, particularly Jo Taplin, who represents the views of literally hundreds of people who have contacted me over the last few weeks. I thank you for your bravery, Jo, in standing up there because the podium can be a very lonely place. The Mon and Breck canal was begun over 200 years ago and over the intervening time has brought great prosperity to us here in Monmouthshire. First through trade and industry, and in more recent times through tourism. It plays a huge role in the wellbeing of our residents, being a place of natural beauty, tranquility and for recreation. It attracts over 3 million visitors a year. No longer an industrial corridor for coal and iron, gone now the important trade in limestone. Burnt lime made here in the lime kilns of Monmouthshire played a crucial part in the agricultural revolution and was transported widely. It also played a crucial role in the manufacture of mortar for the construction industry. And many of the lime kilns are still visible and are of such importance they are Grade II listed. Its significance to trade and the continued wealth and prosperity of our beautiful county should not be underestimated. Once it enabled the passage of ironstone and coal to serve the ironworks that fuelled the Industrial Revolution. We should be proud of our industrial heritage and the part the canal made in putting Monmouthshire on the world heritage map. With the coming of rail, the canal went into decline and has a somewhat chequered recent history with a loss of certain stretches. So that today only 35 miles are navigable, with other parts in various stages of restoration. There is increasing awareness of the benefits of regeneration that canal restoration can bring. Years of work has been done by our colleagues in Torvine who have plans to extend the navigable section in their part of the canal. Is this to be lost? But we are fortunate, the fully navigable part of the canal runs through Monmouthshire. The towpath is also fully accessible to pedestrians and cyclists alike and it forms part of our national cycle network. As councillor for the community of Goitra Warr, I know first hand the benefits it brings to employment, to business along the route, to the visitors and residents who use it for their recreation. And it's somewhere that I walk regularly with my dogs. For some people, it's actually their home, they've chosen to live on it. So, then, what's the problem? Since its inception by Act of Parliament in 1792, the canal has depended on a supply of water from the River Ask and its tributaries, with 80% of the supply originating near Brecon. And this has always been supplied free of charge. Water passes along the canal, feeding numerous tributaries of the Ask along the way, returning some of it to the Avon Lloyd near Pontymoil. And there are many small streams and slipways that pass through the canal in Goitra Warr. The water doesn't get consumed, rather it is returned, although there's obviously always some loss from evaporation. So what has happened? The canal is managed by the Canal and River Trust, CRT, sorry CRT, or Glendur, as it's known in Wales, which is a charitable trust that has historically received much of its funding direct from Westminster Government. However, in the last financial year, it received 41% of its funding via commercial income and is working hard to reduce its reliance on government funding. But with little consultation, Glendur is now being required by National Resources Wales, a government sponsored body, a Welsh government sponsored body, to both obtain a water abstraction licence and is being limited in the amount of water it may abstract in a day. The third player, Doucumry, Welsh Water, are able to supply water from another source, but at prohibitive cost, which this Canal and River Trust cannot afford. The dry winters we are starting to experience are causing extra pressure on all our rivers and their complex ecosystems. We are living through a period of climate change that means we will see more extreme weather events, such as last November's Storm Burt. When, I believe, in my ward, the canal played a vital role in holding back and slowing down some of the water that might have caused more flooding of properties. We must consider the impact that losing the canal might bring to the many communities along its path. To operate its locks, the canal needs a daily supply of water and the canal will quickly run dry if the source at Brecon is restricted. Making it inoperable and closure will be inevitable. What then will happen to our marinas, boatyards and canal side pubs and cafes? Over 200 years, the canal has developed its own ecosystem and, I can get no answer to this question, does the canal and the River Ask represent one interdependent ecosystem? In my view, they are not mutually exclusive. I just don't know. If the canal is lost, what happens to its ecosystem? To the kingfishers, water voles and gooseander ducks that return each year? To the eels that swim up to bask in the tributaries? To the slightly less attractive microfauna and flora that form the base of our chain of life? What I do know is, though, that in 2017, Glendur received an award of 2.5 million pounds from the Welsh Government's Green Infrastructure Investment Fund, a significant investment in the resilience of the canal's structures, water supply and habitats. Is that all to go to waste? A canal that is allowed to run dry is a sad sight to see and very difficult to restore due to its construction, which is based on brick and puddling clay. Being a consort canal, it is not without its challenges as there are many embankments along the route. But I believe its languorously winding nature, much of it through Banai-Bricain Yorg National Park, is what makes it unique and draws tourists from the world over. Many of you will know that I have petitioned Welsh Government over this crisis situation. I was astonished at the backing I have received from the many business groups, organisations associated with the canal. The petition took 10 days to reach 10,000 signatures and I am now waiting to hear when it will be debated in the Senedd. The press coverage has been staggering. Signatures have come from every county in Wales and it has gathered support from as far afield as Afghanistan, United States and South Africa.
One minute.
Thank you. The Mon and Breck is clearly a well-known and beloved canal. Now, there is a glimmer of hope in this sad story. Last week, the Canal and River Trust reached an agreement with Doucumry to save the canal for this coming season. The canal boat operators were particularly relieved to hear this, though some had already lost bookings caused by uncertainty. It's a temporary fix only. A permanent solution needs to be found as soon as possible. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. My apologies, I forgot to ask if there was a second, councillor Howarth. Do you wish to speak now or to wait till later?
I'll speak now, Chair, as a second also.
Of course.
I think it's very important that I do it now and not come back in, it will stop other members. May I thank councillor Butler and everybody around her for bringing the motion today and making the canal, the Mon Breck and canal, at the forefront of where we are with our strategic aims. I wasn't that pleased this afternoon with the response from the cabinet member to a member of the public. I thought we actually degraded what he came here for, to represent many people out there. He didn't get an answer to his question. To say it's now our responsibility, I feel is poor. I think we have a duty and a responsibility for the Mon Breck canal as a council. My children grew up on the canal and I think many people within the canal area, their children grew up. They spend many hours on the canal. I learnt to fish on the canal and many, many people learn to do lots of things on the canal. Many of our schoolchildren in Monmouthshire actually go on the canal. They spend hours up there, learning how to do all sorts of tasks. Many charities use our canal, are raising funds and money to support good causes. Does our canal have a future, long term? The way we are at the moment, with what we're saying and what is happening out there, it doesn't. And that shames me to say that we in Wales will not look after our heritage. It is heritage from the iron masters, the Industrial Revolution that we had, them people. Most canals were actually privately owned and I think they were in Wales as well. I know they were up north, the Leeds Liverpool canal was privately manufactured with reservoirs privately supplying the water. I have asked certain individuals to actually explore where the water originally came from to supply the canal because I believe that the River Ask was not its original source of supply. We're talking about late 1800s here. They did not have on the high grounds pumps to pump water up to feed rivers and canals. So, there is exploratory things going on. There may be covenants out there within documents. Who took over, let's say, the Taliban reservoir? Why was it constructed? So there may be something out there and I give that as a glimmer of hope because at the moment, our hope is that somebody's going to come up with a solution to find something out of the sky to put into our canal. Because at the moment, we don't have a solution. It's a very expensive solution and isn't going to continue. May I just say, on the tourism side of it, the Mon Breck canal, as councillor's pointed out, brings in and generates thousands and hundreds of thousands of pounds towards our counties bordering us. We have a crisis here and I believe with the motion that we as a council have to take this serious. If the canal ever closes, and this is fact, it will crack, it will deteriorate and the village where I come from, in Gilwyn, would have a serious problem with flooding. Not many of you in this chamber will know that actually we had a breach on the canal quite a number of years ago and it washed out two properties and flooded the village of Gilwyn, the lower end of Gilwyn. And I know there was emergency funding put in to repair the canal, which I thank and the owners of boat operators were thankful we managed to get the canal back up and running. But underinvestment in structures and the basin of the canal has gone on for decades. And I believe that we, as an authority, owe it to the people of Monmouthshire to try and move where we can a solution to keeping the Mon Breck canal open. There was legal factors in this with the case brought by the Canal's Trust against National Resources Wales, there was an appeal. The appeal was lost and I believe the appeal was to do with the salmon up the top end of the canal, at the River Ask. I'm sure they can find a solution to finding water to put back into the canal. The Mon Breck canal is the highest situated canal in the whole of Wales. We have many canals in Wales, but it's actually one of the highest supporter canals. So it does have its unique issues, but that doesn't mean that they can't be resolved. I urge this council and I urge the leadership team to speak and campaign to safeguard the canal and give it a long-term future. For the younger people out there, for all the people which use the canal, I urge this council to support this motion and make sure that retain our prime historic structure within Monmouthshire. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Birch.
Thank you Chair. I too would like to thank councillor Butler for bringing this motion. I don't think you will find any disagreement and I hope we can all support it. The Mon and Breck is a wonderful piece of industrial heritage. And I say that as something of a canal geek myself. Built in the 1790s and 1800s and only briefly profitable before being overtaken by the railway age. It is an absolute engineering marvel. It clings to the hillsides of the Ask Valley and it was built, as has been said, to take the coal and limestone and iron and manufactured goods to the Newport docks. And its survival is not only a tribute to the Wibbly men and children who built it and worked on it in the past, but also to the tenacity of the volunteers of the various canal trusts who rescued it after closure in 1964. And the canal, towpath and various structures around and over it are an important part of Monmouthshire's tourism officer, as has been said, with several businesses offering holiday boats and day hire, not to mention the canal side pubs and the holiday lets and the businesses at Goitra Worf. It's an important wildlife corridor and water habitat and there are also people who call the canal home, such as the gentleman we heard from previously. And I can only imagine what people are feeling now that the canal is threatened with possible closure to navigation during the dry periods as a result of the threat to its water supply. The Mon and Breck has always relied on extracting water from the River Ask, particularly since losing its original water supply, which I understand was from the Crumlin Arm, closed when the A467 was built in 1969. And over the last 200 years of existence, there have been recurrent issues with leakages and man slips and significant public investment over the last 50 years to restore it and to keep it open. Because as has been said, artificial waterways are very fragile things and require constant maintenance and a steady flow of water to keep them open to navigation. The current situation over the abstraction licences is a result of the action taken to protect the habitats of the River Asko, which I'm sure we would also all support. And the reality of the climate emergency is that Wales is facing periods of spring and summer drought, alternating with more frequent storms and torrential rain and flooding, as we all know. The canal is part of that complex water system in the Brecon Beacons and Ask Valley and we need Doucumry, Natural Resources Wales and the Canal and River Trust to really step up and work together collaboratively and creatively to safeguard our rivers, our drinking water and our canal in this new reality. I agree that I don't think those things are necessarily mutually exclusive. Currently, our local tourism businesses aren't just caught in between arguments about the flow of water, but they're also about the flow of money. Doucumry can supply the water the canal needs, but at a cost which the Canal and River Trust regard as unaffordable. And I'm very glad that there has been an interim agreement between Canal and River Trust and Doucumry, a stopgap put in place. But what the people who are booking a canal holiday this summer want is certainty that the canal will open or will continue to be open and the locks won't have to close. But where I think we do have to be clear though is that Monmouthshire Council is not a party to this dispute. Our residents and tourism businesses are affected and we absolutely have to stand up for them and are doing so and will do so and to call for a speedy and responsible solution. But this is not our problem to solve. Realistically, it's the Welsh Government which will need to be the primary convener of these conversations, supported of course by the four local authorities who have always worked in partnership to restore the canal over many years. And the leader has already, I understand, written to the leaders of Powys, Torvine and Newport Council, the other local authority areas through which the Mon and Breck is navigable. We're aware of the representations that have been made to Welsh Government, including the petition and the BBMP will, I'm sure, be making similar representations. I think the Canal and River Trust, Doucumry and Natural Resources Wales are now very fully aware of the level of community concern and our MPs and Senedd members share that concern. And I hope that this pressure will be sufficient to deliver moves towards a solution and I'm sure that we will be a strong part of that, making that happen.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Butler.
Thank you Chair. The environment of the canal is incredibly important from its history of the Welsh mining valleys and our industrial past. It connects with the resurgence of nature and adds to the beauty of the environment of Monmouthshire and Breconshire. It's right to help the River Ask, the fragility of the fate of the Atlantic salmon that faces great peril and the birdlife that needs the river systems to exist of course need help and it's completely understandable. The Canal and Rivers Trust have undertaken their responsibilities as custodians of this important environment seriously. They, with various partners and volunteers, have done remarkable things to look after the flora, fauna and wildlife that relies on the Monmouthshire and Brecon canal. We have an important ecosystem that exists because the canal exists and we have to find a solution that is not just a short-term fix like using the Ask reservoir near Mudfi. The rivers Seven Y and Ask all start in a field at Plin Liman and from there feed our river systems and our canal network. It's a wonderful connection that threads its way through Wales and is intrinsic to our identity. I consider it a dereliction of duty by the Welsh Government to wash their hands of the canal and say it's nothing to do with them. Joseph Taplin's question to full council this afternoon shows us how incredibly important this environment is for many reasons. And on that vein, councillor Birch, whilst I agree with a lot of your sentiments as cabinet member for the environment, I think we do have a responsibility and a duty to work for the good of the canal, for the good of the residents, for our visitors. It's incredibly important and we shouldn't just say it's nothing to do with us, but we'll help. We should say we will be part of the push to make sure we find a proper solution for this. And I think it's a duty that we have to uphold, to influence the Welsh Government. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Davies.
Thank you Chair. It's a great pleasure to support my friend's motion this afternoon and to speak in favour of preserving the Mon and Breck canal, which of course runs through my own ward of Chlamvoyst Warr and Gwylion. As has been said this afternoon, the canal is no mere historical artefact. It is a living thread which of course connects both our industrial past to our environmental present and indeed to our economic future. The canal has profoundly shaped both the topography, the personality of this county and indeed continues to shape the way in which we both live, work and welcome visitors to the county of Monmouthshire. There's an old proverb which says that we do not inherit the earth from our ancestors, we borrow it from our children. And I think councillor Butler's motion puts that ethos into action this afternoon. We are all councillors, custodians. Custodians not just of a landscape, but of a legacy and a local economy that relies on both. Preserving the canal is not simply about protecting nature or celebrating Monmouthshire's proud industrial past. It's an investment, an investment in future generations and our wider economic wellbeing. And if I may, take a moment to thank councillor Butler for her steadfast work in elevating this issue to national prominence. The strength of feeling, as we've heard this afternoon, and the strength of the public's response to her petition confirms that this is more than a local concern. This canal well and truly is a national asset valued by residents, tourists and nature lovers alike. But if I may councillors, what this canal and its plight illustrates, perhaps more clearly than any policy paper could hope to achieve, is this. The environment and the economy are not opposing forces. If you pardon the pun, they flow together. So let this motion serve as a challenge to this authority, not just to this chamber, but beyond these four walls, to all of us, to place greater stock and greater value in our culture, in our heritage and indeed in our environment. Too often, these issues are treated as if they were somehow secondary concerns, overlooked perhaps by short-term economic pressures or drowned out, if am I say so, by the populist drumbeat. The plight of this canal brings into sharp focus just how deeply interconnected these issues truly are. Our environment, our history, our economic prosperity do not exist in isolation. They shape and indeed sustain one another. They are central to who we are and to the future we are building together as a people and as a county. Thank you councillors.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Brocklesby.
Well said councillor Davies. I think as a council, we all agree that the economy, the social and the environment are intertwined and our peril do we look at one by themselves. I would like to thank councillor Butler for bringing this motion to council. I think it's one that we should absolutely agree as one to support. Councillors will know that I have already been working to raise this issue to the Senedd with local authorities from Powys to Newport for us to come together, recognising that this is not one person, one authority that should be involved, but all those organisations that have a stake in the future of our ecosystem, the Ask and the canal. I entirely agree that they cannot be looked at separately. I have also been in touch with cabinet secretaries to discuss this issue and will continue to do so. I'm happy to take forward the motion as it stands and will of course report back to colleagues on where we are. I would add, we find our ways of making our voice heard. And the petition, the voices that we heard, Jo Taplin, the voices in the ward that I share with councillor Howarth, they are voices that we must amplify and recognise that they also have a place in seeking a longer-term solution to both the ecosystem and ecology of our wonderful River Ask but also of the canal which sits beside it.
Thank you councillor. I don't see any other hands up. Does the proposer wish to sum up?
Yes, I do, thank you, thank you Chair. And thank you councillor Brocklesby. And thank you everyone else for the warm words this afternoon. this afternoon. I am at odds slightly, because I do believe that this is a matter for this council first, and that we can have some influence on the outcome. And I do thank councillor Brocklesby for the work that she has been doing with other councils and in petitioning the Welsh Government. What we are talking about here is the Monmouthshire and Brecon canal, so I call upon the leader of the council to convene a meeting of the key stakeholders, Glendur, Camry, National Resources Wales and Dewchumry, so that councillors might fully understand the situation. I should remind everyone that we refer to the petition, that two thousand, currently two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine of our residents here in Monmouthshire have signed the petition. As regards abstraction licences, it is my understanding that the needs of the canal were factored in very late in this process, and I would like to learn more about that. I believe there is an affordable solution out there, whether it be by legislative variation of the licence, or seeking an alternative source of water, or by some other means. It would be catastrophic to our beautiful county of Monmouthshire to lose this major asset. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And with that, we can go to the vote on this motion. Thank you. Which will appear in the chat.